I would like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council meeting. This council meeting is being held at Town Hall, Monday, May the 6th, 2024. This meeting is being broadcast on the town's YouTube channel. I am Hazel Livingston, the mayor of the Town of Lexington. I would like to introduce my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Protem Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Jimmy Michaels.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Gavin Smith.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Will Allen.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to ask Pastor Alan Kendrick from Middle Church to come up and ask our invocation for us.
Well, let's pray. Lord, we thank you for tonight. We thank you for the decisions that will be made in this room that will affect many people. God, I pray that you would give wisdom and guidance to all that sit on this council. I pray that there would be wisdom and revelation, Lord, that those two things would coincide, Lord, that your Spirit would go forth in this region, Lord, that what happens here, Lord, really does change this community. So I pray that you would give great strength, great comfort, and peace to all the decision-makers. Lord, I thank you for what's going to happen tonight. Be with everybody in this room as they travel home this evening. We thank you for it. With joy in our hearts, gladness in our spirits, we say amen.
Thank you. And I'd like to welcome U.S. Navy veteran Richard Ross to lead us in our pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Richard, would you like to tell us a little bit about your service? We always ask our veterans to share a little bit.
Yes, ma'am. I'm a proud member of Lexington. I live in the city here. I am a Navy War veteran and am a member of American Legion Post Six, and I'm also a nurse at Prisma.
Welcome, ma'am. Thank you for coming to say the pledge for us.
Thank you, ma'am.
At this time, I will call the council meeting to order. An executive session council met prior to the meeting where we discussed the following matters: legal advice regarding agenda items and issues related to a road construction project in the town. No vote was taken. Do I hear a motion to ratify this report?
Summit.
Mayor Protem makes the motion. Do I hear second?
Second.
Councilmember Smith, second seat. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Are there any deletions from tonight's agenda? The copy of the minutes from the council meeting held on March 4th, 2024, and a special called council meeting held on March 18th, 2024 are attached. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections in these? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve. It's submitted.
Mayor Protem makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Smith, second seat. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. We will now open the public hearing portion of this meeting. We ask those that want to speak to please come to the podium, provide your name and address for the record. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and a timer will be set by the clerk, which will sound when three minutes is up. There will be no standing headcount of opponents or proponents. The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain facts regarding the subject matter on the agenda. Please note, this is only for council information and not acquisition and answer sessions. These guidelines are in place to help the public hearing portion run efficiently and allow all those that wish to speak proper time. With that, is there anyone that would like to speak to final reading of franchise agreement for Loomis Fiber? Hearing none. Final reading to Annex 332 Railroad Avenue. No one wishes to speak? Final reading for budget adjustment to fiscal year 2024. Nobody wishes to speak, so we will move forward with our first presentations, and our first one is read by Councilmember Gavin Smith for Small Business Week.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington declaring May 6th through 10th as Small Business Week in the Town of Lexington. Whereas the dedication of entrepreneurial spirit of small business owners are vital to our nation's economic growth and prosperity, and whereas small businesses are a central part of America's economy, providing 70% of new private sector jobs in this country, and whereas as the nation's economy continues to grow, the entrepreneurial spirit must be fostered and encouraged, and whereas during Small Business Week, cities and towns across America salute small business owners and entrepreneurs for their contributions to America's prosperity, and whereas the Town of Lexington celebrates Small Business Week to applaud the efforts of small business owners in the community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington that May 6th through 10th, 2024 is hereby proclaimed Small Business Week in the Town of Lexington, and that all citizens are called upon to observe the week and to make an effort to encourage and foster the development of small businesses within the Town of Lexington. Signed by Hazel Livingston, mayor for the Town of Lexington. So now I believe we have some representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, if you'd like to come up and talk with us about small businesses and why they're so vital to the local community.
Well, we've got several in the council, so I'm sure you guys are very much, and women are aware. I'm Angela LaBord. With me is Royce Shannon, our chairman of the board from Dominion. We are so excited. We've got a number of events this week to kick off the small business festivities, and certainly we are so proud in the Town of Lexington, so we appreciate the support of the town and appreciate this proclamation. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Would you like to say anything?
Yep. We just appreciate everything that you're doing to support the small businesses in our community. Thank you.
Yes, thanks for being here. Madam Mayor, would you like to come down and get a picture?
(applause)
Our next proclamation is for Shayla Bowers, USA National Miss Palmetto State, 2024, and it's long.[482.62][482.62](laughter) A proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington recognizing Shayla Bowers, USA National Miss Palmetto State preteen, 2024. Whereas Shayla Bowers has represented Lexington in earning the title of USA National Miss Palmetto State preteen, 2024, and whereas she is the daughter of Jamie Bowers and Dr. Ebony Bowers and the granddaughter of the wonderful Constance Keratof Fleming. Didn't have wonderful in there, but.[524.16][524.16](laughter) And whereas Shayla is in the sixth grade at Pleasant Hill Middle and has been involved with paternity since a young age, having the honor of being the princess for Miss South Carolina, 2022, Julia Heron, and Miss South Carolina Teen, 2022, Gabrielle Agro. Did I say that right? Whereas she has participated in the Miss America Teen National Princess and Princess Program, attended Miss America's 100th Anniversary Pageant, and was featured in several videos and spoke live during a stream preliminary event on the Miss South Carolina stage. And whereas the USA National Miss platform is inspire, which encourages delegates to perform community service and volunteer work to be based on one of the three pillars of kindness, compassion, and earth. And whereas as USA National Miss Palmetto State preteen, 2024, her platform is Shayla's Sanctuary, which focuses on kindness as her inspire national platform pillar, by providing food for over 32 cats, making blankets for cats and dogs housed at Pets Inc. And whereas she also has made pillows and blankets for military veterans while also providing kind words and deeds to her fellow classmates that are in challenging situations. And whereas as part of Shayla's Sanctuary, she is also the Spokes Preteen for Four Paws for Abilities, an organization that trains and provides service dogs for disabled military veterans, children, and adults. Whereas Shayla will be representing her family, the Town of Lexington, and our beloved Palmetto State at the National Pageant, where she will be competing for the national title of Miss USA National Miss Preteen this July in Orlando, Florida. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington that Shayla Bowers is hereby congratulated for being named USA National Miss Palmetto State Preteen, 2024, and that best wishes travel with her as she competes for the national title of USA National Miss Preteen this July in Florida. Proclaimed the sixth day of May, 2024. Signed, Hazel Livingston, mayor of the Town of Lexington.[670.12][670.12](applause)
She's only in the sixth grade. Can I play?[676.12][676.12](laughter)
Well, hello. I'm glad to be here today, and I'm so glad that I get to represent South Carolina, and South Carolina has always been a home to me, and I'm so glad that I can represent it and go a long way to USA National Miss in Orlando.
We're gonna be cheering you on for sure.
Thank you.[700.51][700.51](applause)
Am I not on?
Oh, where you are.
Okay, I'm sorry. Maybe they keep cutting me off. Our next proclamation is for National Tennis Month. A proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington declaring May, 2024 as National Tennis Month in the Town of Lexington. Whereas on May 24th, 18, May 24th, May 21st, 1881, the USTA, originally known as the create rules and standards for the emerging game of lawn tennis. And whereas the USTA is the nonprofit national governed body for tennis in the United States and leads the promotion and growth of the sport at every level of play, from beginners to professionals at the U.S. Open. And whereas the USTA is the largest tennis organization in the world with over 550,000 members from every corner of the country, and whereas the USTA proudly partners with local tennis programs to showcase the important health, social, and educational benefits of tennis and make the sport available to everyone regardless of age, environment, condition, or ability through its USTA adaptive grants. And whereas the latest research by the Physical Activity Council shows that more than 23.8 million Americans played tennis in 2023, an unprecedented 25% increase in participation over 2020, and the highest number of players since the PAC study began in 2007. And whereas by increasing the accessibility of tennis for citizens of Lexington of all ages and ability, the USTA has contributed to making our community happier and healthier. And whereas the USTA has declared the month of May as National Tennis Month to encourage players, organization, facilities, retailers, tennis manufacturers, and more to promote local programs and activities at parks and facilities to showcase tennis and spread the word about the sport and its benefits to help players and non-players alike find courts and play opportunities in their communities. Now therefore be it proclaimed by mayor and council for the Town of Lexington that May, 2024 is hereby designated as National Tennis Month, and the Town of Lexington and all citizens are urged to become aware of and support National Tennis Month. Proclaimed the sixth day of May, 2024, signed by Hazel Livingston, mayor of the town. I do believe we have a row of ladies out there. So if y'all will come forward and speak to us, and then I'll come out there and present it to y'all. We got a couple rows and a guy.[737.51][737.51](laughter)
Half the audience.[739.51][739.51](applause)
Thank you so much for this recognition. We are on behalf of the latter board, we want to just say how much we appreciate this. Lexington County has some of the best tennis facilities in the state of South Carolina. Our CTA, which is the Community Tennis Association, is one of the largest in the state of South Carolina, and our county courts are a big part of that. So Lexington's investment into tennis, we've seen the numbers, and we are really appreciative of all Lexington has done for tennis, and we are really excited about the future. So, thanks so much to everybody, and we're hoping to see y'all in the courts.[748.51][748.51](applause)
Our next proclamation is presented by Mayor Protem Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. A proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, declaring May 5th through 11th, 2024 as Municipal Clerks' Week in the Town of Lexington and recognizing the valuable contributions that the municipal clerks make to cities and towns in South Carolina. Whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among servants, and whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal, the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continuously strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most important that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington that May 5th through 11th, 2024 is hereby declared Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, and further that appreciation is extended to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Ms. Laura Henson, and to all the Professional Municipal Clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Proclaimed this sixth day of May, 2024. Hazel Livingston, mayor. Mayor, would you like to draw me a little photo of Ms. Laura?[778.51][778.51](laughter) (applause)
In our next proclamation, and I think our last one, is read by Mayor Protem Ron Williams. Also, it is for the Police Officers Memorial Day.
Thank you, Mayor. A proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington recognizing May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th, 2024 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas the day was set forth to honor officers who gave their ultimate sacrifice. The National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund reported that as of December 31st, 2023, 136 federal, state, tribal, and local law enforcement officers died in line of duty in 2023. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their local law enforcement agencies and that the law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas federal, state, county, and municipal law enforcement agencies have grown into modern and scientific agencies which unceasingly provide a vital public service, and whereas Lexington's Women's Club will place banners in Lexington during Police Week in memory of the fallen officers and to honor the men and women who currently serve their communities each day with courage and dedication. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington that May 15th, 2024 is hereby declared to be Peace Officers Memorial Day with a special observance to be held on May 16th, 2024 at the Lexington County Law Enforcement Monument, and that May 12th through 18th, 2024 be declared Police Week in the Town of Lexington. That all citizens are urged to recognize fallen law enforcement officers, disabled law enforcement officers, as well as the law enforcement officers and their families who currently preserve the rights and security of all citizens dated the sixth day of May, 2024. Give this to one of our police, who's Matt? You gonna come on up?[913.12][913.12](applause)
At this time, we'll have a vision plan update. If you were not there, you missed it. It was a great weekend in Lexington as we held the grand reopening ceremony for Virginia Hilton Park. If you haven't been to see it yet, I highly encourage you to check it out. It was packed when we came in tonight. It's located directly behind Town Hall at 111 Maiden Lane. It was a special day with a great turnout from the community. Even the daughter of Miss Virginia Hilton was able to join us and to cut the ribbon. We've gotten a lot of great feedback about the upgrades and the new features, and we're so happy the park is open again. Again, want to thank all of the staff involved in the project, and I'm looking forward to everyone making new memories in the park for generations to come. Old Mill Pond Trail, the work continues on the one-mile trail around the Old Mill Pond. The final bridge is being assembled, and lighting is going up. We expect to announce an opening date very soon, and if you want to know more about our vision plan projects that we're working on, visit lexsc.com. At this time, we'll have a traffic update from Mayor Protem Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Believe it or not, our local schools will be out for summer break ahead of the Memorial Day holiday. Therefore, traffic activity will differ from normal patterns. The red lights will have to get a new cycle. High school graduations, celebrations in the area may cause an increase in traffic delay on the roadways as well, but be patient, and that'll, all the traffic will be a little bit lighter for us, we hope. Lane closure is scheduled on North Church Street near West Main Street for Wednesday, May 8th at 1:30 a.m., and will end at 10 a.m. This closure is scheduled to replace concrete in the parking lot at 102 West Main Street. May 8th, 2024, the traffic committee has been rescheduled to June 5th, 2024, at a.m. here at Town Hall due to the traffic committee not having any agenda items for May. We encourage you to follow the town's social media outlets. PD has an awesome page that a lot of folks get on for traffic alerts. The town staff's done a great job posting the park. I'm sure all of you have seen the camel. So if you have any, please call 803-358-7273 to report any traffic signal issues, unsafe roadway conditions, or a pothole that needs to be repaired.
Thank you. Now we're gonna move into new business. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 23, 2023, 24 budget adjustments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. South Carolina law, and more specifically Article 10, Section 7B of the South Carolina Constitution, requires that we do an annual budget and adopt one, or all municipalities do, with all revenues equalling expenditures. Attached to this agenda is the draft budget, which meets and exceeds the intent, and so, Madam Mayor, I would make a first reading approval for approving the budget for fiscal year 2025.
Councilmember Lyles makes a motion. Do I hear second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Smith, second seat. Do I hear any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I don't want to be obnoxious, but I've had some time to think about this and pray about this. Y'all can chalk this up to Jimmy Stewart and Mr. Smith Goes to Washington moment. I did not realize that the utility rate increases were kind of assumed to happen. Is it correct that we had a 3.5% increase last year as well?
Yes.
So this would be for two years, it'd be a 7% increase for the utility rates? And I talked to Rachel, y'all are awesome, as always, but the more I've considered it, I don't feel like in my conscience I can vote for a budget with the utility rate increase along with the fee increases. There's obviously a problem going on in this country. We've got a big inflation situation. Everybody's fully aware of that, and of course, we have to deal with that as a town. I fully understand that. My concern is, can we be different? Can we buck the trend of everything else going up and say, we as the Town of Lexington are going to not go along with that, even though we agreed years back to have this kind of intermittent fee increase? Can we direct staff to bring us a budget without the utility rate increases and without the fee increases? It's a beautiful budget, but I'm wondering if we can whittle it down just a little bit. And I know we talked a little bit about the credit card fee that we're no longer be charging, so that's $333,000 that theoretically we would save, and I get what Rachel said. You can't really budget around that, but I'm just curious if we can't find more ways to save the citizens of this town so that we're not charging them more for water and sewer. So I'm just saying for my conscience, I don't feel like I can vote for this budget as it is right now, and I move that we direct staff to come back to us with a budget without those fee increases and the utility fee increases.
Stuart, will you please explain why the fee increases were attached from 2021? I mean, why we are doing that?
I'd be happy to address that, Madam Mayor, members of council. We operate a huge water and sewer utility. We've got a tremendous amount of costs that are associated with operating that system, and we also have a huge capital program that is related to operating the system, to providing the service to over 25,000 customers throughout a substantial portion of Lexington County. It's a vital, vital service that we provide. We have experienced tremendous growth, as you all are aware, over the last 25 years, and the water and sewer utility has had to grow to meet the demands of, of the community. And what we have done for multiple decades now, at least three decades, is about the first time I know that we had a rate analysis done was 1995, and we've systematically had rate analysises done over this.
For the Police Officers Memorial Day.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation of the Mayor and Council for the Town of Lexington recognizing May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th, 2024, as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas, the day was set forth to honor officers who gave their ultimate sacrifice. The National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund reported that as of December 31st, 2023, 136 federal, state, tribal, and local law enforcement officers died in line of duty in 2023. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their local law enforcement agencies and that the law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas, federal, state, county, and municipal law enforcement agencies have grown into modern and scientific agencies which unceasingly provide a vital public service. And whereas, Lexington's Women's Club will place banners in Lexington during Police Week in memory of the fallen officers and to honor the men and women who currently serve their communities each day with courage and dedication. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Mayor and Council for the Town of Lexington that May 15th, 2024 is hereby declared to be Peace Officers Memorial Day with a special observance to be held on May 16th, 2024 at the Lexington County Law Enforcement Monument and that May 12th through 18th, 2024 be declared Police Week in the Town of Lexington. And that all citizens are urged to recognize fallen law enforcement officers, disabled law enforcement officers, as well as the law enforcement officers and their families who currently preserve the rights and security of all citizens dated the 6th day of May, 2024. Give this to one of our police officers, Matt, you want to come on up?
At this time, we'll have a vision plan update. If you were not there, you missed it. It was a great weekend in Lexington as we held the grand reopening ceremony for Virginia Hilton Park. If you haven't been to see it yet, I highly encourage you to check it out. It was packed when we came in tonight. It's located directly behind Town Hall at 111 Maiden Lane. It was a special day with a great turnout from the community. Even the daughter of Ms. Virginia Hilton was able to join us and to cut the ribbon. We've gotten a lot of great feedback about the upgrades and the new features, and we're so happy the park is open again. Again, want to thank all of the staff involved in the project, and I'm looking forward to everyone making new memories in the park for generations to come. Old Mill Pond Trail, the work continues on the one-mile trail around the Old Mill Pond. The final bridge is being assembled and lighting is going up. We expect to announce an opening date very soon. And if you want to know more about our vision plan projects that we're working on, visit lexsc.com. At this time, we'll have a traffic update from Mayor Prochem Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Believe it or not, our local schools will be out for summer break ahead of the Memorial Day holiday. Therefore, traffic activity will differ from normal patterns. The red lights will have to get a new cycle. High school graduations, celebrations in the area may cause an increase in traffic delay on the roadways as well. But be patient and that'll, all the traffic will be a little bit lighter for us, we hope. Lane closure is scheduled on North Church Street near West Main Street for Wednesday, May 8th at 1:30 a.m. and will end at 10 a.m. This closure is scheduled to replace concrete in the parking lot at 102 West Main Street. May 8th, 2024, the Traffic Committee has been rescheduled to June 5th, 2024 at a.m. here at Town Hall due to the Traffic Committee not having any agenda items for May. We encourage you to follow the town's social media outlets. PD has an awesome page that a lot of folks get on for traffic alerts. The town staff's done a great job posting the park. I'm sure all of you have seen the camel. So if you have any, please call 803-358-7273 to report any traffic signal issues, unsafe roadway conditions, or a pothole that needs to be repaired.
Thank you. Now we're going to move into new business. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle and ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2023/24 budget adjustments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. South Carolina law, and more specifically Article 10, Section 7B of the South Carolina Constitution, requires that we do an annual budget and adopt one, or all municipalities do, with all revenues equaling expenditures. Attached to this agenda is the draft budget, which meets and exceeds that intent. And so, Madam Mayor, I would make a first reading approval for approving the budget for fiscal year 2025.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion. Do I hear second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Smith seconds it. Do I hear any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I don't want to be obnoxious, but I've had some time to think about this and pray about this. Y'all can chalk this up to Jimmy Stewart and Mr. Smith Goes to Washington moment. I did not realize that the utility rate increases were kind of assumed to happen. Is it correct that we had a 3.5% increase last year as well? So this would be for two years, it'd be a 7% increase for the utility rates? And I talked to Rachel, y'all are awesome, as always. But the more I've considered it, I don't feel like in my conscience I can vote for a budget with the utility rate increase along with the fee increases. There's obviously a problem going on in this country. We've got a big inflation situation. Everybody's fully aware of that. And of course, we have to deal with that as a town. I fully understand that. My concern is, can we be different? Can we buck the trend of everything else going up and say, we as the Town of Lexington are going to not go along with that, even though we agreed years back to have this kind of intermittent fee increase? Can we direct staff to bring us a budget without the utility rate increases and without the fee increases? It's a beautiful budget, but I'm wondering if we can whittle it down just a little bit. And I know we talked a little bit about the credit card fee that we're no longer be charging. So that's $333,000 that theoretically we would save. And I get what Rachel said, you can't really budget around that. But I'm just curious if we can't find more ways to save the citizens of this town so that we're not charging them more for water and sewer. So I'm just saying for my conscience, I don't feel like I can vote for this budget as it is right now, and I move that we direct staff to come back to us with a budget without those fee increases and the utility fee increases.
Stuart, will you please explain why the fee increases were attached from 2021? I mean, why we are doing that?
I'll be happy to address that, Madam Mayor, members of council. We operate a huge water and sewer utility. We've got a tremendous amount of costs that are associated with operating that system. And we also have a huge capital program that is related to operating the system, to providing the service to over 25,000 customers throughout a substantial portion of Lexington County. It's a vital, vital service that we provide. We have experienced tremendous growth, as you all are aware, over the last 25 years. And the water and sewer utility has had to grow to meet the demands of, of the community. And what we have done for multiple decades now, at least three decades, is about the first time I know that we had a rate analysis done was 1995. And we've systematically had rate analysis is done over this period of time since then. And what the objective is to look at the operation of the, the system, to identify what the cash needs are of the system, what the demands on the system are, and to ensure that we have sufficient resources to provide the service, to meet our legal obligations for our bondholders, and to provide the service to the community. So the last time we did, did the analysis was just before the pandemic. We know that since, since the time of the analysis in like, in 2019, 2020, we've undergone, we've experienced the pandemic, we've experienced inflation that we haven't had in four decades, and the, the rate increases that were adopted were adopted prior to those things happening. And so we've, we've, in fact, our rate increases, I believe, if you looked at it over the last few years, are less than the Consumer Price Index over the same period. And our, we have sought not to have any increases beyond what was previously planned. As I mentioned the last time, we discussed it in the, in the budget workshop, we have traditionally taken a, a year off from rate increases while we analyze it. And it's possible that we could come back with recommendations in the future of, of taking an extended period of time. In fact, there was a point where we had a break in rate increases in the past. But I would strongly urge this council to continue the prudent financial management that we've, we've done over the years, not to burden our citizens with hefty increases at one time, that we systematically approach rates and charges consistently so that, that we don't fall behind the eight ball and somehow fall behind on maintaining our system the way it should be. That's my point of view, of course, and I just wanted to give you the background and some, some thoughts on that. We've brought to you a balanced budget that meets substantial needs of the community, including personnel. So that's the, the history and the background and the reason why we brought to you the proposal that we have.
And I think too, that Councilmember Allen, and not, no disrespect, but the fees that he's mentioned too are usage fees, which I don't know if he's aware, but our dog park is highly used by people coming from Irma and the other areas, and some of those fees are passed on through that, that he's talking about. But what he neglected to mention is that our citizens, we did not raise property tax on, and we have not raised property tax on. So I would rather it be a usage fee any day over a property tax increase on our citizens. But the water and sewer is, it's a tough thing to deal with. We all know that. It's something we have to do, but some of our sister cities have had to go up a major amount this time because they haven't been planning ahead of time. And I can guarantee you a 25 to 30% increase at one time compared to a 3% is going to be a lot harder hit on somebody, so.
Yeah, I would just chime in. My perspective on this would simply be this is something we look at, I think, every five years, and it's something that has to be maintained at a certain level to maintain our bond rating so that we can borrow money to keep this infrastructure running. I think it would be short sighted, and I don't know the number. I'm assuming, I'm assuming that if we did no rate increase, I think I heard the, the number about $950,000. So I think, I mean, the big question would be if, if Mr. Allen's proposal went through and we had to cut $950,000 from our budget, I don't know where that would come from. Maybe, Mr. Allen, did you look at the budget to find where you might be able to find $950,000 to offset this rate increase? And presumably, that $950,000, since it is in utilities, would have to come out of utilities. So you can't take it out of general funds or hospitality tax or anything else. It would have to come out of utilities. So I guess that's a question for Mr. Allen. If we were to cut a million dollars from our utilities budget, I don't know, I think the, I think the overwhelming majority of that budget is personnel. I'm not sure, but I mean, Stuart, is there, if you had to cut a million dollars from the utilities budget, what would you cut?
It would be a, a very heavy lift. It would probably be in personnel because a significant portion of our utility operations is the purchase of water from the City of West Columbia and the purchase of sewer treatment from the City of Casey. Those contracts are by formula, and we, they make up a substantial portion of the cost of the system. And so the next highest item would be our personnel. And we know that there, it's a struggle to accomplish all that we need to do. We're dealing with low, we're dealing with a number of vacant positions right now. We're trying to remedy that. And so by taking those positions out of the budget, we would be, that would be the, the single area where we can most cut the budget is in people, and that would be detrimental to the system.
And I believe when I was running back in November, a lot of the candidates that were running, were running on improvements to the infrastructure for our water and sewer. So how do you do that without these increases?
I think it's, Madam Mayor, I think it's always also worthy to note that I think in 2021 or 2022, inflation rate was 8 or 9%. We had about a 2 or 3% increase. And both of those years, back to back, there was significant inflation, and we trailed behind inflation in a significant way. And so since we ran behind inflation for a couple of years and we're pretty much a dead level with Consumer Price Index this year, I think it's 3.4%. I just don't, there's no, there's no utility or no business in the world that's sustainable by running behind the inflation rate year over year, especially in our scenario right now where our Public Utilities Department is having a difficult time hiring because of labor shortages, and we're down a few positions. I think we're bringing actually a, an item a little later in our agenda to talk about some bonuses and some referral scenarios so that we can staff appropriately. Because as I spoke about recently, like I, I love our police department, and I need them about once a year. I use the water every day and the sewer every day. And I think people don't realize that it's $35 million, big business with about 100 employees. It's a very complicated scenario, and if you get behind on that about two or three years, it could be tragic for the health of our entire community, not only the Town of Lexington, but the broader community which we serve. So I certainly appreciate the sentiment of trying to find savings and trying to be good stewards of the tax money, but this is, this is a vast community project that I don't think anybody can just go find a million dollars in. And so, but unfortunately, I think our budget is set up in such a way that, that there's a million items in here, and if you object to one, the question is, are you going to not vote for the 999 items that you agree on because you disagree with one? And that's why you get elected to make hard decisions. Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ford, if, bear with my voice here, if you were to have to cut a million dollars and you weren't to cut it out of personnel, would it be safe to say that the cuts would likely come from the capital improvements?
Well, the capital improvements would probably be impacted, but the, the problem is that when you look at your budget, your operating costs need to be paid for by your recurring charges that the system generates. And so if I, in order to have a zero cash flow impact, remove a, a capital project from the plan, that doesn't address the fact that we are getting behind on being able to pay for the recurring cost of the system from recurring rates and charges. Because most capital projects, you know, they, they're long live, but we have to pay the electric bill, we have to pay the City of Casey, we have to pay employees, all of those operating costs on a recurring basis every month, every week.
I guess the point that I was trying to make with that is, i- if we weren't to pass a rate increase this year, it could set us back in our ability to continue, to make continuous improvements to the system. And, and that's where I was trying to go with that is, I, I love the idea of always giving our citizens a break on rates or, you know, millage increases, but I think that one of the things that was said to me early on when I became a member of council that really resonated with me and still does to this day is that the Town of Lexington really, in a lot of ways, is a big utility company that runs a small town. And I always, I thought that was kind of neat, quite frankly, because I didn't realize before I became a member of council that the Town of Lexington and our utility services serves a broad stretch of area much outside of the town limits. So where I'm going with all that is I just think, I, I appreciate your sentiment, but I think it would be irresponsible of us, you know, to not assess a rate increase because it could potentially impact our ability to make continuous improvements on the system that is so important not only to town citizens, but also to the greater Lexington County area.
Well, like I said, I don't want to be obnoxious. I love y'all. But the reason why I'm struggling with that is because we do sit up here and we're, we're happy that we didn't have a property tax increase, which is great, but this is still something that they don't have a choice in the matter. We say it's a usage thing, but they can't just not have water, they can't just not have sewer. So I moved, just because I don't know if there's any appetite for that. I figured there probably wasn't. And like I said, this is just a conscience thing for me. So I'm not doing this just to be obnoxious, just to be clear.
Nobody thinks that, but like Councilmember Carn said, sometimes you have to make tough decisions and you have to decide whether you vote against everything for one thing in it. It's kind of like, as an elected official, nobody's going to agree with you 100% of the time, even your own spouse. So you've got to measure what part, you know, you can live with, and is the majority of it great? And is the majority of what that council person or that person elected is doing represents more of how you feel than, than you don't? So it's a tough decision. It's tough decisions to make. I battled it, and I'm sure Ms. Constance could say she battled it sometimes too, but you know, usage fees in my mind still are a lot better than, than property tax fees that just go on certain people, but water and sewer is a big, big part of our community. And it has to stay healthy and it has to stay safe, and we've got to have the men and women out there, they're running, they're working themselves to death right now, trying to keep up with all the stuff that's being cut and damaged and that type of thing. So, and we're, we're without, and like Todd said, we didn't go up 10% and 12% when the inflation was high during COVID, so I say we stayed pretty even keel as much as we could. And I definitely don't want to have to come sometime and tell everybody we're going up 25% because we don't have a, a choice.
Mayor. There's one thing that, you know, I'm looking at capital expenses on here and I, and I've kind of skimmed over them. I haven't had a chance to talk to David individually about some of these capital expenses that are on here. I'm not even sure what, what utilities asked for that we didn't give them, because we don't, we don't get that information, of course. But I do know that, you know, Mr. Allen, to your point, we, back after I was first elected, we, we actually had one of the, the surveys come back, and I remember the gentleman standing up and explaining to us that we were charging too much for water and not enough for sewer. And I stopped for a second, went, do what? Somebody's actually saying we need to go down on the cost of water, but go up on the cost of sewer? And then he explained in detail how the whole process and his plan would work by doing minimal increases every year. I think once you've had the benefit of going through one of those, you might see the enterprise fund a little differently. I, I know it, it helped me tremendously because it's kind of hard to look at a budget that's got this kind of numbers in it and not have the, the background information explained by the folks that actually did the study. So I, I don't have a problem with 3.5 because we, we, we all learned this five years ago.
Anybody else? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Mr. Lyle made a motion that was seconded, but it was a subsequent motion by Mr. Allen.
That's correct. Madam Mayor.
Nobody seconded it.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would call for the question and reaffirm the motion to approve under first reading approval, the balanced budget for the Town of Lexington for the fiscal year 2025 in accordance with Article 10, Section 70 of the State Constitution wherein the expenditures and the revenues are equal.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. It's all but one in favor. Correct, okay. New business item number two is Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. South Carolina law requires town council to adopt a tax levy each year. Attached is the draft ordinance for the tax levy for fiscal year 24, 25. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Carnes makes a motion. Do I hear second?
I'll second it.
Mayor Prochem seconds it. Any discussion on this?
Madam Mayor, could we just ask Mr. Ford also, I think it's important just to be on the record here about the millage rating increase here as well? Could you just share that for the public?
Absolutely. That's one of the things we're most proud of, of course. We haven't raised property tax millage in 30 years, and that has been a commitment of this town council through multiple, multiple election cycles, and we're proud of that.
All right, I'm going to ask you one follow-up question. When I was campaigning or talking to people, they asked me, well, what's millage? A lot of people don't know what that is, so for those in the audience and those watching, can you just explain that a little bit more?
A mill is a dollar value for every $1,000 of assessed value of your property. So the millage rate is the number of dollars per thousand, basically.
And I'm going to ask a question. How many times have we lowered it over that 30 years?
Well, I would say it's at least five times.
I can think of three.
I know of three since I'm elected.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm with Gavin. I'm kind of a conspiracy theorist, and I, I don't know who came up with the whole idea of millage, because millage is a percentage. And I think we use millage just to confuse people because a mill is a percentage of a dollar, if I'm not correct. And so can you tell everyone, like I think our millage rate on property taxes is, I don't know, I don't know exactly how many mills we get, but you can convert that to a decimal because it's just a percentage. And so while we're doing education, I, I don't know why we don't say your tax rate is .002% of your assessed value. I think government likes to disguise and bring ambiguity.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The ordinance has it at 26.056 mills.
There you go.
26.056.
Mills upon each dollar.
Right, and so, but you can convert mills to a decimal by moving a decimal point three spots, right? Am I not correct on that?
Percentage moves it twice in and of itself when you say percentage.
I think it's, I think it's in thousands.
So it's like five moves. I'm getting some head nods from the other engineers.
So that would be, well, I'm not going to percentage, I'm going to miss, so it would be .02665 times the assessed value.
I think we're confusing people again.
I was fixing to say, wow, y'all might have everybody confused more, but.
So, all right, so, so your millage rate can, can be converted to a decimal, and mills is a fancy word for a decimal percentage related to assessed value. All right, I hate that terminology. Can somebody change that at State House?
So I have a motion, I have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. I can't see well. Yes, that was unanimous. Okay, our third item is Councilmember Will Allen, the Ice House Amphitheater vendor policy update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The vendor policy for the Ice House Amphitheater was presented at the April 15th, 2024 work session. session. The change is editing the Power and Fee section for food vendors. A copy is attached. Ask for a council approval of the policy update.
Councilmember Allen makes a motion to our here second. Second. Councilmember Michael seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. I can't ever see Will, but you're going to have to start doing this. And it is unanimous. Oh, I can see, okay. Next one is Town Administrator Rachel Glatton, Town Social Media Policy.
Mayor and council, at the April 15, council work session, we provided to you the proposed town social media policy, discussed it with you all, answered questions, and we have it today for your approval and implementation.
Do I hear a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Councilmember Smith makes a motion, Councilmember Michael seconds it. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
I was reading over, and the target audience is for Columbia, Aiken, Augusta. We just got some information that it was, what, over 600 folks attended Clydesdale from outside?
Six thou, oh, 600, yes, from outside.
Yes, from outside of that area. So this is definitely a very good plan, I feel like, because it's kind of, we're already seeing results from what the town staff's been doing.
And our 30,000 camel.
Yeah, and almost 30,000 people watched the camel video. Oh, my gosh.
They were waiting to see if the mayor fell off.
Maybe so.
All right. So any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Item number five is also from Town Administrator Rachel Glatton, the Marketing and Communications Plan.
Yes, Mayor, also on April 15, we shared with you the proposed marketing and communications plan, discussed with you, and provided examples, and it's here tonight for your approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Councilmember Smith makes the motion.
Second.
Councilmember Allen seconds it. Is there any discussion on this one?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would just like to commend the staff. I think we said that at the work session, but we had just seen that presentation, and I think everybody on this council gets tired of hearing me talk about communications, but that's my line of profession, and I went home and read it in depth, and I just want to tell Lauren, and Jack, and Kaylee, and Michael, and I don't remember who else was on that. Walker. You all did a phenomenal job, and I appreciate y'all putting that together. Laura, everyone involved, and also I'm talking to them.
Thank you. Anybody else? All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Our next one is also from our town administrator, Employee Referral Bonus Program.
Mayor and council, at our last work session, I briefly mentioned to you among the many ways that we're looking to recruit and retain employees, something that's come up is an employee referral bonus program whereby an existing town employee can refer someone they know to apply for a job here with the town, and if that person is subsequently hired, the referring employee receives a bonus paid in two installments, first upon initial hire, and then the second have to be paid after successful completion of six months probationary period. So the policy is attached here for you all review approval to be effective this evening upon passage.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lyle makes the motion to our here second.
Second.
Councilmember Smith seconds it. Any discussion?
That was that one, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Allen, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Next one is also from Town Administrator Rachel Glatton, New Employee Sign-On Bonus Program.
Yes, Mayor, this was the second policy I briefly discussed with you all at the work session last week. Again, as we are seeking recruitment and retention incentives, one that we've talked about amongst ourselves departments, and we've learned from other agencies, is a sign-on bonus, is very helpful for positions that are considered hard to fill. Traditionally, you'll see this with law enforcement. Here in the town of Lexington, this would be applicable not only for our police department, but for our utilities department. Both are fantastic departments with great directors, the most supportive council, and what I've proposed here are three different types of sign-on bonuses. One bonus at a particular value for current certified South Carolina police officers. The sign-on bonus would be paid in two increments, one upon hire, the other after six months. We have a second amount for a law enforcement officer who is uncertified. We welcome both certified and uncertified applicants. And then, lastly, what I'm calling all other positions, because in the future, utilities may not need a sign-on bonus, because they may be full, and we may experience another department that has a hard-to-fill position. So all other positions separately have a sign-on bonus amount, again, paid out in multiple increments.
Do I hear a motion?
This is for your review and approval, so implementation would be today.
Hear a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Smith seconds it. And just for clarification, it has to be posted for 60 days without any applicants before that comes?
Correct, without qualified applicants before it can be considered hard to fill.
Okay.
So, Mayor.
Yes.
So this would go on in perpetuity?
Effectively, until we are full, or we find ourself in a position where we don't have a difficult time recruiting.
And it says there it has to be open for 60 days.
I'm just thinking, three years down the road, is policy still in place? Do we want to limit it to one year and come back in one year and reevaluate?
I mean, I think it's got the qualifications in there that it has to be open out there for 60 days, so they couldn't just do it if applicants were coming in the door over 10 or 15 days.
Correct.
Saves them from just having to come back and... I think our administrator's working hard to put some policies in place that they can follow and have guidelines that council wants.
Frankly, our goal is to not have to have a sign-on bonus, because we would be fully staffed. So when we get to the point to where we're fully staffed, this would not become necessary, nor if we have a position that's open for 30 days, for example, that doesn't have a, or that we finally receive a qualified applicant, there would not be a necessity for a sign-on bonus, because we need the definition.
So how many folks are we down in the police department at this point?
10.
And the water department?
11.
11, so we're down 21 folks in two departments.
In just those two departments.
In just those two departments, okay.
At this point, those are the only two departments that have a position that qualifies.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Our next item, we're moving into old business, is from Councilmember Jenny Michaels, granting a fiber optic cable franchise agreement. Loomis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Loomis Fiber of South Carolina LLC is requesting to enter into a franchise agreement with the town of Lexington. The company installs fiber optic telecommunications lines in the public road right-of-way. The town requires the franchise agreement pursuant to 111.17 of its business license ordinance. It shall be unlawful for any person to construct, install, maintain, or operate in, on, above, or under any street or public place under control of the municipality, any line, pipe, cable, pole, structure, or facility for utilities, communications, cable vision, or other purposes, without a consent agreement or franchise agreement issued by the council by ordinance that prescribes the terms, fees, and conditions for use. State allows this grant in 58-9-2230 of the South Carolina Code. There's a statutory structure for the amount of the fee the town may charge. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Michaels makes a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes makes, second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. That was kind of all over the place. Any opposed? Looks like they were all unanimous, I mean, we did a bunch of... Our next old business item is from Councilmember Todd Carnes, granting a fiber optic for Ripple Fiber.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ripple Fiber, Inc. is requesting to enter into a franchise agreement with the town of Lexington. The company installs fiber optic telecommunications lines in the public road right-of-way. Town requires franchise agreements pursuant to 111.17 of its business license ordinance. This ordinance consent franchise or license required for use of streets. A, it shall be unlawful for any person to construct, install, maintain, or operate in, on, above, or under any street or public place under control of the municipality, any line, pipe, cable, pole, structure, or facility for utilities, communications, cable vision, or other purposes, without a consent agreement or franchise agreement issued by the council by ordinance that prescribes the terms, fees, and conditions for use. State law allows this grant in Code 58-9-2230 of the SC Code. There is a statutory structure for the amount of the fee the town may charge. Madam Mayor, I make a motion for final reading approval of an ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise agreement to Ripple Fiber, Inc.
Councilmember Carnes makes a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle seconds it. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
No discussion, but I think it's worth noting that, just in, I want everybody to understand, the issue of fairness, the exact same franchise agreement was issued to both companies who will be working in our community, and we wanted to level the playing field and provide them both the same opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember Carnes. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Next item is Councilmember Gavin Smith, Annexation of Lexington County Tax Map for 332 Railroad Avenue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. David A. Thomas owns .52 acres located at 332 Railroad Avenue and has petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is located on the parcel. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential and high-density residential. Railroad Avenue is classified as a local road. The planning commission reviewed the annexation during their March meeting and recommended protected residential zoning for the parcel and local road classification for Railroad Avenue. As such, I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Smith makes a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mayor Protem, Williams, second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Our next item is FY 2024 Budget Adjustment by Mayor Protem Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. During the budget presentation process, items were identified priority items. They have, some of those things have long lead times, or we needed to address specific current-year items. Contingency funds will remain available in the 2024 budget, which can be used to fund the proposed adjustments without any new appropriations. The following summarizes the adjustments. Administration, in order to handle the transparency, FOIA technology, $38,784, under police capital, Planning, building, and technology capital, $107,510. Parks department will be $120,453. Transportation will be $25,000, and that's to do a downtown parking study, for a total of $355,497. The total adjustment will be funded by the general fund for $287,351, enterprise fund for $68,147. No new net appropriations, because the budget contingency funds are utilized. Make a motion for final reading approval of an ordinance to amend fiscal year 2024 budget allocating contingency funds.
Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Protem Williams makes a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. And our last item is an old business item, appeal from administrative decision availability of utility service. Tier Homes LLC is disputing the town of Lexington's decision that sewer service is available for the purpose of serving the proposed Priceville Estates subdivision, a planned 89-unit subdivision at the end of Veterans Court off Augusta Highway across from Centerville Elementary School. The town has indicated service is available per terms of its policy which is attached. The utilities department sent this determination to the applicant in September of 2023. On February 1, 2024, the applicant's attorney notified the town that the applicant disputed this determination. The letter of dispute was treated as an appeal of the decision of the utilities department, and per town procedure, was forwarded to the office of the town administrator. The town administrator appealed the decision of the utilities department, and the applicant appealed to the town council. On April 1, 2024, town council heard from Mr. Wesley Pill of Brunner Power Wall &amp; Mullins of Columbia on behalf of Tier Homes. For clarity purpose, the town is willing to provide the service to tiered homes. The applicant does not wish to utilize it, but cannot get set permits from DHEC if the utility service is deemed available. And with that, I make a motion, we uphold the decision of the town administrator in determining that sewer service is available to the subdivision per our practice and policies.
I'll second the motion.
Councilmember Smith seconds the motion, any discussion?
Madam Mayor, the applicant is here, developer with his lawyer in case there are any questions.
No discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of upholding this town administrator's decision, please raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. Okay, let's see, let me get to this. Are there any questions from the news media, which I don't think we have any? Any public comments on tonight's agenda items? Are there any questions or comments from staff?
The only thing I would like to say is, every department in our town had something to do with opening of the Virgin Hilton Park on Saturday, whether directly or indirectly, and it was a great team effort, I'm really proud of everyone, and thank you all for coming.
Now, town administrator was a great sport, she carried around a lot of bugs on her shoulders.
She also did a great job on the camel video.
At this time, I would like to take a moment and recognize Town Staff Employee Economic Developmenter Jack Stewart and Councilmember Gavin Smith on being named in the Lexington County Chronicle list of Top 20 Under 40. This list highlights members of the community who use their talents to improve the community through work and volunteering. Congratulations to both of y'all.
Thank you.
Also want to recognize our new employees hired by the town of Lexington in the month of April. In our finance department, we had Margaret Phillips. In the police department, we had Ethan Oswald. And from the utilities department, we had Jeff Picon, and Malik McCall, and Olivia Werner. Did I get that right? Welcome to the town of Lexington's team and family. We appreciate y'all, and we're happy that you're here. That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, May 6, 2024. A recording of this meeting will be available for viewing on the town's YouTube channel, and without objection, we are adjourned.